Amin, Amin, Amin. Hallelujah! Muthiaki nadakiruva. Teve kare sandika. Ni dam kedikavika. Pidari kudukavika. Hallelujah! Paadi, paadi nadakiruva. Namaha.
Muthiaki nadakiruva. Teve kare sandika. Ni dam kedikavika. Pidari kudukavika. Muthiaki nadakiruva. Teve kare sandika. Ni dam kedikavika. Pidari kudukavika. Paadi kottaduva. Thodi nankisaluvva. Paadi kottaduva. Thodi nankisaluvva. Ayin thirapankare. Ayinamare sira. Ayin thirapankare. Ayinamare sira. Ayayinamare kare kri. Mayraya unga kare kha. Ayayinamare kare kri. Mayraya unga kare kha. Paadi kottaduva. Thodi nankisaluvva. Paadi kottaduva. Thodi nankisaluvva. Kondorun, porulorun. Urapadasee naai. Kondorun, porulorun. Urapadasee naai. Telameenamilla marai. Paadikaku nadakinaai. Telameenamilla marai. Paadikaku nadakinaai. Paadi kottaduva. Thodi nankisaluvva. Paadi kottaduva. Thodi nankisaluvva. Kaadegal badakita. Vandava unga kare kha. Kaadegal badakita. Vandava unga kare kha. Kalpaari kiri kri. Kani kri koda sira. Kalpaari kiri kri. Kani kri koda sira. Paadi kottaduva. Thodi nankisaluvva. Paadi kottaduva. Thodi nankisaluvva.
Oorva kisalukka taavi.
Nigal vaarkayenak seepaavu ve. Oorvaateesalukka taave. Om paathayine suga. Om paathayine kada. Om paathayine suga. Om paathayine kada. Om paathayine kethakasatoosum. Om paathayine kethakasatoosum. Iridanu vaarkayenak. Odiyake vaayi koodum. Iridan vaarkayenak. Odiyake vaayi koodum. Kani vaayum. Dukam vaayum. Kani vaayum. Dukam vaayum. Oorvaateesalukka taave. Neeoorvaateesalukka taave. Nigal vaarkayenak seepaavu ve. Oorvaateesalukka taave. Maharam kanti kri. Madhraman vaayi koodum. Maharam kanti kri. Madhraman vaayi koodum. Kani vaayum. Dukam vaayum. Kani vaayum. Dukam vaayum. Oorvaateesalukka taave. Neeoorvaateesalukka taave. Nigal vaarkayenak seepaavu ve. Oorvaateesalukka taave.
Hallelujah! Hare karele kudukka, avri aaraade. Avri avan tere sugam, tere veda sugam. Avri avan tere veda sugam. Hallelujah, avri avan tere iskaroosam, tere vesa. Hallelujah! Nigal karele kudukka, deva. Karamkarele, karamkarele. Hallelujah, haani kudukka, oorvaateesalukka taave. Hallelujah, paathayenak seepaavu ve. Omaraadha kundare, deva. Vaarkayenak, deva. Deva kare kri. Maharam kanti kri, deva. Padaramaayi vaarkayenak, deva. Hallelujah, deva. Hallelujah, deva. Sarvavatna kri, deva. Andavare, mayuvi kri, deva. Maynaan kaadekri, deva. Mayuviyathukro, vyathukro, vyathukro, vyathukro. Hallelujah, deva. Manthu, deva. Deva visayi, deva. Deva visayi, deva. Deva visayi, deva. Hallelujah, deva. Deva visayi, deva. Andavare, deva. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Sothra, 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 andavare. Abba, velakale, deva. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva sugam, deva. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Hallelujah, deva. Haani kusalukka, deva. Naandu, seene, kudukka. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Hallelujah, haani, deva. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Esuve, mayuviyathukro, vyathukro. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Hallelujah, haani, deva. Haani, deva. Deva kri. 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 Hallelujah, hallelujah! Nigal naaraadani, deva. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Sothra kri. Hallelujah, hallelujah! Nechu, pinchu, benchu, maaraadavara. Andavare, hallelujah! Umayee, podu, dhi kri. Dhi kri. Dhi kri. Hallelujah, nikhatara, paani. Maaraadavara, irukkira, andavare. Abba, hallelujah! Esuve, esuve. Ni vaayapadaane, namunno de, kuda. Irukkire, deva. Deva kri. Hallelujah, deva. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Andavare, karnmani poole, kri. Deva kri. Oru tagappanai, poole. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Andavare, daaii, poole. Andavare, maarkile, anithu, kollukkira. Deva kri. Deva kri. Andavare, deva. Andavare, daiya, padukkira. Deva kri. Deva kri. Abba, nangal, soorunnu, pokumodala. Deva kri. Deva kri. Abba, deva. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Esuve, deva. Andavare, naalla tagappanai, deva. Dhi kri, abba. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah! Andavare, deva. Deva kri. 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 Hallelujah, deva. Naalla deva. Maaraadukkira, deva. Naalla deva. Hallelujah, deva. Oru vodun, deva. Kai, veda. Abba, deva. Miittu, vina. Abba, deva. Hallelujah, hallelujah! Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Hallelujah, hallelujah! Umayi, magi, veda. Esuve, umayi, naga. Dhi kri. Dhi kri. Dhi kri.
Aaradhayi. 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 Valavari. Aaradhayi. Oseena, oseena, oseena. Karmani, poole. Aaradhayi. Kardigukvayen. Aaradhayi. Aaradhayi. Oseena, oseena, oseena. Varinaduk. Odibisum. Aaradhayi. Virdivendike. Oseena, oseena, oseena.
Nigal karela, karela, deva. Andavare, abba, deva. Deva vaarkayenak, kudi. Deva visayi, deva. Tagappanai. Andavare, deva. Deva vaarkayenak, la. Vaarkayenak, kuda. Deva kri. Abba, kare chundaga, kara. Deva kri. 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 Haani, deva. Deva kri. Deva kri. Deva kri. Abba, hallelujah, hallelujah! Illa, deva. Deva kri. 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 Andavare, deva. Deva kri. 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 Andisindri, deva. Deva kri. 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 Esuve, deva. Deva kri. Deva kri. Andavare, deva. Deva kri. 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 Deva kri.[816.72]
Hallelujah, the Lord has blessed us. And we will pray to him. For he is the one who has blessed us. He is the one who has blessed us. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah, this day we have our worship here. So they started with me, but the Lord has prayed to bless us.
And we will pray to him. For he is the one who has blessed us.
Today I am going to talk with you about the Lord who is on our needs.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The one who is the supplier of needs.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Matthew six says that this.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Therefore, the father knows the things which we need before we could ask him.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord knows our needs.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is gonna do miracles in our lives.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
What, how, what type of people he is gonna bless with their needs?
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is gonna fulfill the needs of an individual.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is the one who fulfills the needs of families.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is the one who is fulfilling the needs of a society.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
For each and every man who is living in this globe needs, the Lord is faithful to supply his needs.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In a time of struggle when we call upon him.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
With me take Psalms twenty-five, sixteen and seventeen.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Here David says, "Lord, have mercy on me."
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
For I am desolate and afflicted.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When a man is desolate.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When there is no one to help him.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When there is no one to set him free.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When there is no one to sustain him.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He gets broken inside.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Bible says it is not good for a man to be desolate.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
We could see suffering individually.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is suffering in desolation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In Psalms twenty-five, seventeen he says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The troubles of my heart have enlarged.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, he is still breathing out of my distress.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Each and every day when problem comes.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Each and every day when situation is done.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Here you can see a man who is suffering in his desolation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
If you could read Psalm eighteen, verse sixteen.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When you read the complete Psalm eighteen.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Here David talks about the situation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You can read from the verse four.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, the plans of death have surrounded me.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The sorrows of my.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is telling he is falling from his distress.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When you read those three verses.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Verse four, five, six, there you go.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, he is in so much of distress.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When people of God are getting into distress.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When people of God calls upon his name.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Verse six says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In my distress I called upon my Lord.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
I cried upon my Lord.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, what type of things are these?
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Lord, with me nothing is possible.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, this is the type where we, we try to ask help from God.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, here David is crying.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, this verse says he heard my voice from his temple.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, when this, when my sound and cry went to his ears.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When people of God calls upon the Lord. When they call upon the Lord.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Lord, please help me.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Whenever our cry goes, reaches the Lord's ears.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
What is happening is the Bible is saying.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You can read from the seventh verse.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord shaken the earth.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, he got very angry.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, he stood up with some hand颤抖.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Everything was shaken.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When each and every people of God is suffering.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When they are desolate and calling upon the Lord.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord has not been seated.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is not looking at other situations.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord becomes more anger.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, he is becoming more anger on him.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The verse nine says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He bowed the heavens also and came down.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, he rode upon a cherub.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Immediately he flew up.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When my child is suffering.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
My child is suffering alone.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Whoever he may be who is listening to this sermon.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
What a situation you are calling the Lord now.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When the Lord hears your voice.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Immediately he starts.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He gets up.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The verse sixteen says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He, he said from the above.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He waves his hands from the high and holds you.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, he, he took us from the sea, the channels of sea.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, whatever situation has been surrounding him.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
What he is saying is he got stuck in the channels of sea and been taken away.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, inside a flood.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Inside a deep sea where it takes him.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
From that situation he is falling upon the Lord.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is, take me from this situation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, from the heaven the Lord gave his hands.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Raise up your hands and say amen.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, from heaven the Lord will raise his hand and lift you up.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You don't fear even in any situation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, the situation is you are standing desolate and I say don't fear.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
There is a Lord who helps us.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In your loneliness, there is a God who helps you.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The situation may be against you.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Nothing to be done.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
There is a Lord for you.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord is there to help you.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is the Lord who can change any situation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In miraculous way.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He can do it in a wonderful way.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
And the Lord be glorified.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He can help any man who is in dire situation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is the God who can, who will help our individual as well.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He will also help a family's needs.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is changing the situation of the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He can turn your pages to two kings.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Chapter four.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Two kings, chapter four says like this.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Here verse thirty, verse thirty, he speaks like this.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You listen to me very carefully, what the man of God speaks here.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He, he like enquires over the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He enquires over the needs of the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He enquires over the problems of the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, this family is serving the Lord always.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, this family is supporting the ministry of God always.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, to help this family, the prophet enquires all these to the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, the lady says, "We are all fine."
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The servant of the God says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You can read two kings, four forty.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
She doesn't have a baby.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The family is struggling with the situation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
His husband is old.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, what does that mean?
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
There is no chance for a generation to form.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, the family is being struggling.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In between of the situation, the Lord has this.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, from the word of the Lord I am telling to you.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In this, in this time, next year you will have a child.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You shall embrace the sun in the next year.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Where the Lord be glorified.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
As the Lord promised, the things happened.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Miraculous blessings came to the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Even when the family went to the problems.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord is one who can do wonders.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Until now, he is, he is doing like that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is not gonna leave the children.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is not allowing the families and the problems to overcome the families.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Problems will come, supplies will come, struggles will come.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Each and every day, the people of God will overcome that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Each and every day, they overcome that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The verse says like that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You can turn your scripture in the Bible to two kings, chapter eight.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
From the verse one of Vedi.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The prophet interacts with the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The prophet talks with the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
There is a famine gonna happen in this nation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Just run away from this, to be safe.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Believing the man of God's word, they start.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
After the end of the famine.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
They return back to the country.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
According to the word of God, the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
By the word of, word of man, man of God, the family returns back to the city.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When the family comes back to the king.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When you look carefully at this situation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The king was talking with KRC.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He was enquiring about the prophet Eliezer.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, this servant of, the man of God says he rose up a man.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He was telling about the resurrection.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
At the right moment, the, the mother comes to that place.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He, the mother comes with the child at that place.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Lord will make us walk in, in that way, in each and every day.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He will guide your fam- family at a perfect time.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
If they would have come a day before.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
She would have not explained about her family to the king.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
If she would have come a day later.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
At least a half later.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord will guide us properly.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In a clear time, he, he brought them a clear.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The, the king was enquiring the servant about the happening.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The testimony and family comes to the stands before.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
This, this verse says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
It will not be glorified.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
There are beautiful miracles happening.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The servant of the prophet says, "This is the family."
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
This is the family which I was talking about.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
This verse says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Two kings, eight, six says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
From the day which she left from the nation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, they returned back everything which she had.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The every income came back.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Everything was refunded back, returned.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
We are the ones who are blessed by him. The Lord will restore us also.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He will guide us miraculously.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is the Lord who supplies the needs.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
One king seventeen ten says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You can read like that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord sends his prophet.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He sends his Sariba.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When, when the prophet comes to the place.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He, he talks with the lady.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Can he give me a glass of water and bread?
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You, you, you listen to me very carefully, allow this.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
We are all familiar about this.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Lord, we don't have anything.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
We have a little bit of oil and a little bit of bread.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
We gonna eat that flour and oil and die.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The family which is going in a path of death.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord sends his prophet to the family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When the Lord sends his minister of God to your family. When a word of God comes to your family.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When the Lord wills to fulfill his plans in your life.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The family gave word to the Lord.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Bible says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You can read the verse fifteen.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
She and her household.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Not only her, but not only her child, but all his household came and ate it.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In this time of this lockdown, the Lord will supply your needs like that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In this, in this time or situation, the Lord will supply your needs.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Miraculously and wonderfully, God has gonna bless each of you.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Finally, let me say something in front of you.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When you are, you have to be very strong in God.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Individual bless, individual needs, whatever it may be, but the Lord will fulfill it.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You may have any needs in your family, but the Lord has done fulfill that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord who knew and we serve will do like that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord is the one who supplies the society's needs.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Exodus sixteen, sixteen twelve says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You can see the voices here written.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Lots and lots of people comes, survives.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
There are different types of families being explained.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
A different, different type of people we have there.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Six lakh of husbands.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Bless the, the women.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The verse twelve says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord said he'll, he'll supply all their needs.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Morning you shall be filled with the bread.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
At twelve, you can, you shall have meat.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In this wilderness, you will have bread and meat to eat.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Or not a day or two.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Or lack and lack of people to eat.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
If you see Exodus sixteen thirty-five.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The whistle has paid for forty years.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, the Lord blessed the society for forty years.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Just run me two seven rites, let us.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Do you run me two seven sayings?
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord was with them for forty years.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He was with them for forty years.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
They lacked nothing.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Till the.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
If you could, turn your pages to Matthew fourteen.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
From the verse fifteen, we can see.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The people have gathered after Jesus.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord was talking with them.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
There were different type of people.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
They stayed for three days with them.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
It is written that they didn't have anything to eat.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When, when Jesus saw that they, he had mercy.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
I cannot leave my children like that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
I cannot leave my people who stay in the presence.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
I have to help them.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Oh, Lord, in this, in this desert, where will we get?
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In this evening, from where we will get these?
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
We also don't have the money to buy this.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Bible says that they not be glorified.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord who is having courtesy on these people.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Whoever it may be.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Whether he is knowing the Lord.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Whether he, he doesn't know the Lord.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Whoever may be.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is loving to all the people who is in this society.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He loves the people in this nation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
This scripture says like that.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When Jesus saw them, he had mercy on them.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
When Jesus saw their needs, he had mercy on them.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He, he caught up and did mighty miracles there.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
In this, in this time of situation, the world is suffering with so many problems.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
We, we, we are aware of the situations now.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
That, that, we, we are aware of the problems which the society is facing.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The word of the Lord says.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The nation don't fear.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Fear not the nation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
Rejoice.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord is gonna do greater things.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord will do greater things.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
He is the Lord who is helping our society.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You may be in whatever nation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
The Lord is gonna supply the needs of your nation.
We are the ones who are blessed by him.
You may be whatever type of family.[1528.48]